This meeting of the Eugene City Council to order. First item on our agenda tonight is the public forum. We'll note that Councilor Cyret and Councilors Clark are with us by phone. The public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the city council on any city-related issues except for those items which have already been heard by hearings official or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. Each person will have three minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. The timer and lights indicate the time you have to speak. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. And so tonight, we're going to start off with, and if I butcher your name, just bear with me, Ed Moy.
Good job. Good job in that he butchered it?
We have a total of 22 people. 22. Go right ahead, you're in.
My name is Ed Moy, and I live in Councilwoman Taylor's district. I went to, I had a really good week, the week after the majority of the council voted not to disenfranchise existing neighborhoods. Then I went to this city council work session, and I listened while planner after planner insisted the sky would fall without SWSAS. They complained about all the work they had invested in SWSAS. One even berated the council for abusing her paid staff by not supporting SWSAS. I would even bet she got paid for that testimony. Listening to them rant left me very skeptical of their ability to grasp what neighborhoods want, even if their boss, the city council, has directed them to do so. And by the way, nobody is paying me for my time in Eau. Has anyone heard of any planning official expressing any regret about spending five years of paid staff time planning how to confiscate our property rights? Has anyone heard them acknowledge doing anything wrong? All I heard from the planners was "raw arrogance and entitlement. We know better than all you little people" was their mantra. Are we really going to accept that the idea that these shameless bureaucrats will change their spots of entitlement? Is it repeating the same action and expecting a different result at the definition of ignorance? I fear that the planning department will just trot out the same dog and pony show that led to SWSAS in the first place. They go through the motions of enduring public testimony, just like they did over the last five years, then they vanish in the shadows with their cabal of who knows who, and just like they did for the last five years. Then they declare victory, and the next thing we know, the council is voting on son of SWSAS. Meet the new boss. After five years of paid staff time, if, excuse me, if after five years of paid staff time, SWSAS is the best the planners can do, I have to ask, why should we trust them at all? When the city asked that question, the planning department was pretty clear that that was beyond the scope of their abilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Elizabeth Brown.
My name is Elizabeth Brown, and George Brown.
You speak into the microphone, Elizabeth?
Alrighty. Does that work for you?
Yeah.
Thank you. I work for Our Children's Trust, and I work with young people around the world and advocating before their governments to compel climate-based emission reductions. And I just wanted to tell you a little bit about a decision that came out last week in, from a district court in Washington, where they recognize a constitutional right and corresponding constitutional public trust obligation of the government to protect and preserve a healthful and pleasant atmosphere. And this case was brought by young people, very similar to the young people who advocated before you for the climate recovery ordinance. And they had requested the Washington Department of Ecology to write a carbon emissions rule that protects the atmosphere for their generation and those to come. And in the decision, the judge declared that these young people's, quote, "very survival depends on the will of their elders to act now decisively and unequivocally to stem the tide of global warming before doing so becomes first too costly, then too late." The court found that the, quote, "scientific evidence is clear that the current rates of reduction mandated by law cannot ensure the survival of an environment in which youth can grow to adulthood safely." The judge determined that the state has a, quote, "mandatory duty to preserve, protect, and enhance the air quality for the current and future generations," and found that the state's current standards fail that standard dramatically for several reasons. And similarly, under the city charter, the city government has an obligation to treat your office as a public trust. And these reasons that the court articulated are the very same reasons why young people in Eugene came before you, meeting after meeting a couple summers ago, to protect their future. You listened to them, you passed the climate recovery ordinance. Yet during the work session earlier this evening, we saw the same charts that we've been seeing, we saw the same trajectory, and I just am here to urge leadership within this council and within city management to implement the ordinance. The climate recovery ordinance is not an aspirational goal. You have a legal mandate under the ordinance, and we shouldn't be looking at Plan B, we should be looking at implementing the law. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. No, no clapping. You can wiggle your fingers, but no clapping, okay? Coriel Radeh-White?
Good evening. Thank you, council. My name's Coriel Radeh-White. I'm a Eugene resident, I'm in Councilor Taylor's ward. I also work for Our Children's Trust. I'm here after attending the Sustainability Commission meeting last week and getting to see the presentation put on by the city about the transportation system plan, which has now just been put out as a first draft. My concern is there's a disconnect between city planning and climate recovery ordinance. It was rather surprising to hear the city say that the CRO was just an aspirational goal while they were putting together the very massive, comprehensive, and productive plan to redo, modify, change our highways, put in new pedestrian and bicycle paths, and all sorts of other resources and infrastructure. I believe it's about $365 million right now. To hear that they're not working under the mandate of the CRO, and that in general, there's just not a cohesive city plan, is a little shocking and disappointing. I think that we need to start prioritizing this, and if we need to rethink how we do our planning, we rethink it. We cannot do urban planning, transportation planning in a vacuum. There needs to be much more of a collaborative effort. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, we have Kathleen Peterson.
I'm here to speak to you about ordinance 4.815, the prohibited illegal camping ordinance. It prohibits basic human rights, including eating, sleeping, and seeking shelter. According to 1B of 4.815, any material in any space where anyone could viably lie down is prohibited camping. This makes any citizen or emergency vehicle with a blanket, a jacket, or any other material in violation of this ordinance. Furthermore, we, the unrecognized citizens of Eugene, feel that we and our friends and families are not a threat to the health or safety of ourselves or the community that we choose to live in, nor is my rainbow bus with chickens on top any kind of threat to peace. And for the necessary protection of the city and its inhabitants, I recommend the city of Eugene repeal this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Stefan Issey?
Thank you, that's Stephen Issey. Grateful for your time. I am here following up, essentially the same thing. I am...
Speak into the microphone, Stephen.
I am considered homeless by city standards. I live in a vehicle with a family of seven. My day definitely has its challenges every single day. One of the problems I face is that a particular set of my challenges are illegal, or could be construed to be illegal, so that the very things that I need to try and do to survive, being parked somewhere during the day in a vehicle that may have a bed in it, that my vehicle can be taken or impounded, which has been being threatened to other homeless people lately, which I did not think was the way it was dealt with in Eugene. I guess I do not want to beat a dead horse, but I do recommend that the ordinance be repealed, and the way that we address people in transition and homeless people struggling who are not drug addicts or creating problems or violence or mess, but actually clean these streets up when I walk around and pick trash up everywhere I go in the parks. I don't violate any parking laws. I should be able to be secure while I try and provide for my family. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Cosby?
See, Kitty didn't make it down here tonight. I'm Mark Cosby, I live in Markville, Oregon. It's great, it's unincorporated. But when I work, when I get the opportunity to work, usually it's downtown. I've been a resident since 1962 of Lane County. One of the concerns that I bring back to the table, July 17th, 2014, I came before this board, and I talked about the removal, or closing down the restrooms downtown. And then I went on a five-month, I went off, do, off of work for five months, and I come back, and, but we had the porta-potties, which seems to help. But in observing the behavior around the porta-potties, I really have to point out that there's not enough porta-potties. Originally, there was like 25, I don't know if there's 11 downtown right now, but there's no sanitation cleaning stations. We still got 1,200 homeless, but my thing is, we got people coming downtown, spending money, creating tax base, and when they leave a restroom, they hit the cold air, they gotta go to the bathroom, they go to the outhouse, there's somebody in there shooting up. Down the street here at the parcade, there's one outhouse for eight restroom stalls that are shut down in that one facility. You ought to come down on a Friday or Saturday night and just observe the second level of the parcade. It is a river of pee. It's disgusting. You go to get in your car, and somebody stood right there and took care of business. I'm scared for this city for health reasons. We have to do better. I do realize that the homeless people are very creative, and like I say, when the bad players aren't in there shooting up, and it takes them about 15 minutes, I've timed them to do that and go through their little cycle, you also have those that move in there for a few hours' sleep. I seen three people go into the outhouse one night, and they were there for about four hours sleeping. Makes it awful hard for somebody coming out of a restaurant, and they gotta go to the bathroom, and they stand there, and they cross their legs, and I say, "There's another outhouse down the street," and so I just, I want to make that point, that you need to, need to do something for people.
Mr. Cosby, thank you, your time's up, okay? Wynne Swafford?
Yes, I'm Wynne Swafford, I live in Councilor Selenka's ward. I'm a part of a small group of building professionals who are concerned that there's inadequate resources and attention being brought to bear on the climate recovery ordinance. I appreciate the councilors that expressed urgency needing to be brought to bear on this. We too would like to see a specific implementation plan. It's been a year and a half now, and we would have liked for more. It seems like what we're getting is a reiteration, reiteration of the goals. The trends seem to have been working in our favor for the last year and a half, or at least the 2.5% emissions reduction seem to be happening somewhat naturally, and, but as was pointed out, where we need to go is significant, and it may get harder as we get closer to those target dates. So rather than front-load the process with inaction, we would really appreciate a great deal more attention. As long as Plan B allows for carbon offsets, we're concerned that that is an easy way out, and we would urge that we try and make the necessary reductions without carbon offsets.
Thank you. Jessica Teeman?
I'm here to speak on ordinance 4.185 as well, which is the prohibition of camping. According to the ordinance, any vehicle with a bed or stove is considered a campsite. So if I am in an illegal parking space, taking my children to the park or the library, I have to fear getting a citation or a notice, or possibly getting towed. You know, that's my home, that's all my kids' belongings. I understand the concern with homeless people in RVs or otherwise trashing the city. I've seen it myself. I grew up here in Eugene, and, you know, I feel like the crimes of creating these messes and noise violations should be dealt with appropriately, but the families who are minding their own business, making their kids' meals, and just taking care of daily life things should not be messed with just for parking and legal parking by public parks. And I guess that's about all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Kristin Brandt?
I'm Kristin Brandt, and I'm very grateful to be able to live, to have enough money to pay the rent with my mother for a place in Eugene here. I'm also grateful for the opportunity to talk to you about the Dust to Dawn ordinance. Dust to Dawn sounds like a great deal for the city, since there are very few dry places to go, it basically erases people during the daytime. I mean, for one thing, just traveling around with all your stuff in the rain drastically affects its future usability. This winter, we need places where people can help each other stay warm, dry, and survive, which the ours and the Ninth Ward camps have been doing successfully for over a year. Sheltering vulnerable people through the harshness of winter, cooking together and making sure everyone eats, helping each other keep tarps tied down and clothing and bedding stay dry. As long as there are no viable options for people who live outside this winter, these so-called unsanctioned camps must continue. We've proven that self-organized, self-governed, small communities can responsibly camp on city property for the winter and not be, they're not criminals, any more than these folks are criminals for surviving. That's all they're trying to do. We hear that the families coming to first place right now. In the last couple of weeks, the harassment has been stepped up considerably on families in vehicles with their children. This isn't the way the most of the community wants things to be done in Eugene, I know that. The community wants to do something about it, and the city gets in the way of people helping suffering people. The overwhelming response at the town hall on Wednesday shows that the local community, the good generous citizens of Eugene, for whom I'm also very grateful, they want to find solutions for this winter. The overwhelming response from mostly anonymous supporters that bring their kids to the camp to give us donations, they want to be part of the solution this winter. They're teaching them, people who bring their kids are teaching their kids something that the city is not demonstrating, that caring about people and helping them doesn't take a lot of money, it just takes the will. Will you be willing to do something meaningful this winter and help our community support people who are homeless? Will you be willing to treat people with respect and dignity instead of like charity cases? Will you be willing to see the skills and abilities of all the marginalized people in our community and bring them to the table as you consider their future?
Thank you. Gabrielle Marshall?
My name is Gabrielle Marshall, and I'm 23 years old. My partner Christopher and I have two beautiful children, one is two and one is four months. We have lived in Eugene for over two years, and in this time, we have experienced homelessness off and on. We have used and continue to use many of the services and resources Eugene has to offer. We take responsibility for our place in the universe, but after countless undependable roommates, living arrangements, housing list, and failed social service experiences, we've developed a bit of cynicism. We became painfully aware that no one who goes home to sleep in a bed cares half as much about our family's safety as we do. We decided that if we got a vehicle we could live in, we would no longer have to fear being put out onto the street with little or no notice at all. We found someone willing to take payments for a van, and we lived on approximately $30 for three months in a row while we made payments. That was about seven months ago. Our name has still not come up on a housing waiting list. For seven months, we have had no problems with police or the people of Eugene, attracting little more than, "Hey, we love your paint job, and wow, what a beautiful family you have." Until recently, we had an encounter with police that has left us shaken, anxious, and scared, not protected, not served. No matter how hard I tried, I could not condense this story into three minutes. But what I realized is that our personal experience with the police is virtually irrelevant. What is relevant is that we were threatened to have our van impounded regardless of whether or not we were present or sleeping in it, regardless whether we were legally parked. Here we sit as a family, we have done everything we can for our children, everything we have been told to do to receive help, waiting for almost a year to come up on a housing list, and now we are being told that what we are doing is an arrestable, towable, criminal offense. And we cannot even walk away from our van with, for fear our home will be towed. Sleeping has been very difficult. Every single headlight that passes us could be the last headlight we see before having seven months of progress ripped away. Struggling to build a sturdy, self-reliant foundation for our family is not wrong, nor does it make me a criminal. The way this city and these police treat people who are down and out, struggling to survive, is wrong. My family has received two $525 public camping tickets while legally parked at the Washington Jefferson Skate Park. We all understand the issues of volume. There are a lot of people in Eugene living in vehicles, so the solution is lumping us all into one problem together. My family are workers of light. No socially created position of authority will ever convince me that I am a criminal for trying to survive in a dying economic system. But we cannot allow this systematic onslaught of people who have...
Thank you.
...respect existence or expect resistance.
Okay. Next, we have Daniel Leiden.
You know, I really don't think I could do much better than that. I'm speaking on behalf of the same thing. And about a week ago, we were approached by the police and told that if we're seen on the city street with something that can be camped in, that it's illegal, that they'll tow it when they see it, that they'll jail us, and they'll take everything we own. And I just really want to ask you guys where you actually think that's fair. You know, it's a violation of everything I was ever taught. Thanks.
Thank you. Lori Powell?
Hello, my name is Lori Elhart-Powell, I live in Eugene. I'm a member of 350 Eugene, we're a local chapter of 350, a worldwide grassroots climate justice and climate recovery organization. We came before the council last year in support of our community's youth and the climate recovery ordinance. I'm 54 years old, my husband and I have no children of our own, so we take very seriously our commitment to other people's children, our commitment to work in every way we can toward their safe and vibrant futures. So we ask that each of you re-enter your deep commitment to our children by working through the glorious weeds of Plan A, not Plan B, of the climate recovery ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Weaver?
I'm Brian Weaver, Ward 1. I'm here to speak about the rezoning South Alaman, and rezoning citywide, actually. I brought with me something that was on the city's website. Downtown is Zone 1, or actually, it's a subarea 1, and 7 have both been MPT'd, so to speak. I don't know if they've been rezoned, but MPT's have been used in these two areas for dense infill. And obviously, you know now that Subarea 8 is up for grabs. But after that, look at the other 13 subareas. I want to make sure that the webcast gets this, and everybody can see it. It's on the website, city's website. It's dated 2013, I'm not sure what month, but the rezoning's a citywide issue. It definitely is. And the city says that they only want, that they need 1,200 more housing units. Well, I sent you guys pictures of an area that I have. I mean, I'm not, it'd be nice to read, to put a little house here, 800 square foot house, rent it for about 600 a month, it's near transit, bike paths, and so forth. What I'm advocating for is to, is to develop the open spaces rather than rezone already developed areas, just to tear them down and put in these towering housing projects. And it was interesting that the city staff told, it was your question, Councilor Evans, that South Alaman will generate between 50 and 250 housing units. I mean, that's quite, that's a wide range, it's a wide range. I would think that the city would have a better idea after years of studying this. Okay, a bunch of groups have jumped in on the rezoning bandwagon, mostly claiming that climate recovery effort will fall off a cliff if the rezoning can't be forced on the South Alaman neighbors. I don't think there's close enough of a length to really make that claim. By the way, Maya Nelson, who represents the Friends of Oregon, lives on a 500-acre goat farm in Lowell, yet she takes a prerogative to tell everybody they've got to give up their R1 zoning in their backyard and their solar access and all that stuff. Real quickly, also, they, none of them brought up the fact that towering, you know, big tall structures would shield the area from their greenhouse effect, which is a very sustainable source of heat.
Right, time's up. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, Sabra Markroft?
I reside in Eugene, in Bethel. First off, I wanted to say thank you for all of the small steps that we've been taking together in providing safe, legal places for people to sleep. The step that I hope that you're going to take tonight, very grateful for personally. I know people who need it very badly. That said, it's not going to be enough. That said, it's not going to be enough. And unfortunately, every time a solution on a small scale gets piloted, the police seem to take it harder on the people who can't find room there. And I would really like it if you folks would take it upon yourselves to figure out a way to keep the police department informed about the actual state of affairs, so that they don't send people to camps that are already full after they break up the camp that they'd been living in safely and successfully. You can't just kick people out and tell them to go to the safe spot, or Opportunity Village, or one of these dusk-to-dawn spots when there's no room at the inn. You end up with situations like people have been mentioning to you tonight. We need to make sure that we all know what's actually going on, so we don't make assumptions and end up crunching people in between them. That's happening too much already. We need to make less of that, not more of that. So again, thank you very much for the small steps, and keep remembering that they're small, and we're not reaching 10% yet. Thank you.
Thank you. Joshua Scove.
Good evening. Councilors, thank you as always for your service, and also hello to Aria and Jasmine watching at home. I'm here to comment on the climate recovery targets that council has begun to consider. First, now that we are getting into serious consideration of specific targets, it will soon be time to update our plans with complete implementation details for both internal and community work. And I'm speaking about the fossil fuel reduction goal for the community, of course. Now, I want to stress a few things. First, we're not starting from zero. I think we should be happy about that. We have previous plans that took real thought and planning by several parts of the city, looking closely at what they do. We know works by, I know personally of works by Public Works Engineering and Facilities and others that have laid out many concrete actions that we can take, many of which are very cost-effective. I'm optimistic that the city apparatus understands the task and is equipped to do more. As we make those specific plans and consider particular actions, we must ensure that we create actions that actually add up to achieving our targets. So let's update those plans and create that roadmap. Second, there's a connection between the Climate Recovery Ordinance and the budget that I've noticed as a Budget Committee member. They give some urgency to that planning exercise. If we don't get to it fairly quickly, certainly in the next half-year, we may miss another entire budget cycle, and with it, the opportunity to have a really well-informed discussion at the Budget Committee that connects the Climate Recovery Ordinance to our budget priorities. It'll become difficult for us to maneuver if we can't do that soon. Third, just briefly, it's important to remember that we have deep concern and support in the community, represented well here tonight, for ambitious action and leadership, but we really have to chart the path to get there. A final comment as a professional who's had the opportunity, the luxury really, to look closely analytically at these issues, at the connection between urban infrastructure, local economies, and carbon pollution. Addressing climate change is a daunting proposition, enough to make some individuals and even whole communities throw up their hands. And we all know that we can't solve it alone from here. But actually, most of our carbon footprint locally is from systems over which we have not only some influence, but quite a bit of influence, especially in the long run. And they're really about land use and transportation and the built environment. Although we don't yet have a local roadmap for achieving these goals in the Climate Recovery Ordinance, we do have a general sense of direction. Compact mixed-use development on transportation corridors, especially with multifamily dwellings that are more energy-efficient and carbon-efficient, and urban design that makes healthy low-carbon transportation safe and viable. These are actually well-established pathways. So please find a way to direct staff to complete the planning and analysis that will connect our CRO, our main active leadership in this area, to those local systems, land use and transportation, and our ongoing planning and infrastructure work.
Thank you. Steve Body.
Hi, my name's Steve Bade. I live in Ward 1. I'm actually here to thank City Council for voting to adopt as official policy the Vision Zero goal of zero fatalities on our transportation system. I'm a member of the city's Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. I thought we might have a bit more persuading to do. I'm so pleased you've seen the issues as they are. I know there will be significant work ahead to integrate the vision into city departments and functions, and consolidate and align policies and so forth. Please be assured that I myself and the Advisory Committee will be there to do everything we can to assist. Thank you.
Thank you. So Ali Amadi.
Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I'll be very brief, and I'm sorry that I'm reading off of my phone, because I already emailed these to
Did you speak directly to Mike?
I'll be very brief. I'm here again to renew my offer to open up storefronts on the common walls of the Kizi Square and my buildings. I have submitted and shared my vision with you electronically and in person. You have sent me to discuss my plans with the city planning staff. From my conversations, I concluded that the city does not have any willingness to cooperate with me, rather is trying to buy more time to finish its behind-the-door deals with developers of apartments and the sale of the square. In fact, now I heard that the city manager already has solid stated majority of the councilors to get a yes vote on building the apartments and the sales of the square. I hope this is not true. It seems that exactly, it seems that except for two councilors and Madam Mayor, other councilors are already given their yes answers to the city manager. I hope, again, this is not true. I'm here to ask this body to stop the sale of our major square in Eugene downtown, and let us to activate activities in that square instead of the sale of this important public As long as everybody is given a chance to cooperate in coming up with a vision, that's going to be an optimal decision on your behalf. I think opening the walls is the first step to make the square a vibrant place. You held back this step for a long time, almost 20 years, and no wonder there are no activities in that square. If the goal is to have apartments in downtown, then please help the current landlords to put apartments on top of their buildings. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kaitlin Feely.
Hello, and thank you for letting me speak to you tonight. My name is Kaitlin Feely, and on behalf of Osberg and Environment Oregon, I'm here to speak about the importance of adding a solar energy goal to the Climate Action Plan. Setting a firm goal for solar installed in the city does four main things. It clarifies the role of solar energy, that it will play in achieving a community's broader environmental climate change or sustainability goals. It helps create momentum for solar program with stakeholders working towards common goals. It guides strategy for increasing solar installations in a community and enables leaders to track progress against the published goal, and it aids in attracting the solar industry to bring jobs and economic benefits to our community. Given the growth in the solar market that we're already seeing, we think that the city should set a goal of at least doubling the solar energy production in the next five years to 2,000 solar rooftops or 10 megawatts of installed solar. That support that we've, the support that we've seen from the community through the past year of hosting events is astonishing. We have been able to collect this in the past 10 weeks, 250 photo petitions within just three days of outreach. We have just last week hosted a solar luncheon where we had 50 members come and speak about the development of solar in the city. And we've also had a lot of support from the business community. Earlier this year, in just two hours of walking around downtown, we were able to get 36 businesses to sign on to a letter in support of developing solar in our city. So global warming is obviously a very serious issue, and I was here for the work session, and I applaud the city of Eugene for its leadership in crafting a forward-thinking and great action plan. And as you consider to think of updating targets and benchmarks, we think that solar should play a role in how Eugene hits its greenhouse gas reduction goals. One of the reasons for this is that solar has much room for growth, and we currently get less than 1% of our energy from solar statewide, when we could be repowering our homes, businesses, and schools with clean renewable energy that never runs out and creates jobs within our community. Thank you very much for letting me speak to you.
Thank you. Next, we have up Maria Gallegos.
Good evening. My name is Maria Gallegos, and I'm here to represent the interests of the students of the University of Oregon. Last term, spring of 2015, Osberg was able to run a vote on campus asking the students if they supported the stay of Oregon going 10% solar by 2025. We only needed 1,400 petitions to get on the ballot, and we planned a week-long petition drive to reach that goal. Yet, we were only able, or we were able to get 2,000 petitions in only three days. We were also able to pass the referendum by 85%, which is a huge win. It really just shows how much the student body cares about the student development of solar and making sure that there is, plays an important role in the new Climate Action Plan. We are going to be the generation that will begin living with the worst consequences of climate change, and now it is our responsibility to make sure that we can do, that we can make the world be a better place to live for our future generations. We need to make sure that there are policies going into place that will protect our planet and us. Solar energy is a very important aspect of Climate Action Plan, and if it's not included or given enough way within the plan, we will be looking over a huge opportunity to better the environment in which we live. This is a great opportunity for the council to set up and protect and better the lives of citizens in the community that voted for you to represent us. Right before I leave, can I get a, can you guys wave from UVO? Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you. Kimberly Gladden.
Okay. I'm Kimberly Gladden. I live downtown. Couple things I want to talk about tonight. I think I'm going to start with, we need national help for the homeless problem in this town. We have homeless coming from all over the country, and we aren't getting tax money from all over the country. A lot of states aren't taking care of the homeless at all. We have people coming from every state, and homeless activists coming from every state. Instead of getting their own state to take care of the homeless there, they send them here. We need more than Eugene can. Otherwise, the option would be for everyone to give their money up, like say, down to $20,000 a year, and then we'd have enough money to take care of the nation's homeless right here in Eugene. The other thing I'd like to discuss is climate change. 24 years ago, I gave up my car. I haven't owned a car in 24 years. I'd like to know how many of the climate change people are still driving cars. I'd like to know, what country does your cell phone come from? What country does your computer come from? How much fossil fuel did you burn getting it over to this side of the ocean? How, what kind of environmental laws do they have in the country your cell phone came from, or your computer or your laptop came from? What kind of labor laws do they have? What kind of minimum wage do they make? What you put your wallet and money into in regards of your technology? And granted, the cell phone technology is highly toxic, and it produces a lot of pollution, and they're what, good for a year, two years? I mean, seriously, those were American jobs that you outsourced overseas by buying foreign-made instead of American-made, when you had the chance to buy American-made. And I think people start have to take the protest home to your house and alter your lifestyle. I had to give up a lot to live without a car. That's why I live downtown. I had to give up my garden. I only get out of town one day a year. How many of you travel to Europe or South America, get in an airplane, burning fossil fuel, and polluting the planet? All that money for your car could be given up to help the homeless. If you're not living in your car, you don't need it. Change your lifestyle. That's what it's going to take to end climate change. If everyone had given up their cars 24 years ago, we'd be way far ahead. And I've kind of been waiting for the rest of you to catch up environmentally with your carbon footprints. That's the key to changing everything. And also, build more shelters for the homeless. I think it's cold-hearted to force people to sleep in the street. That could be helped out of homelessness for families to have to live in cars and sleep in the street, when so many people are spending so much money on travels and trips out of country.
Thank you. Next, we have Heather Seliggy.
I'm here from Ward 2 to speak to you also about the issue of homelessness in Eugene. I want to thank you all for agreeing that this is an emergency, and it is a crisis in our community. And I'd like to urge you to take it a little further by involving our Emergency Management Department in this issue, calling an activation for our Community Emergency Response Team members to participate in finding solutions for alleviating suffering for our homeless population this winter, whether it's calling an activation to assist with the Egan Warming Center, or help putting up the MASH tents that will be put up hopefully for public shelter. I had the opportunity to attend the YIMBY Town Hall last week, and I wanted to share some of the ideas that were discussed. One was a real desire to see the safe parking program implemented more, maybe having parking, public parking garages available, having city parking lots available, implementing a day work program to insulate and maintain the public restrooms for the people who would stay in the safe parking areas, implementing the use of public pools for the showers, so that homeless people can have a place to take a warm shower, just to have it open for a few hours a day. Again, you can work with the people who are using the programs to help to staff them, to help create a bridge towards employment. I'd like, so, there was also a desire to see more lockable storage, so that people could leave their things in one place and go to get services. I'd like to urge you to continue to implement rest stops throughout the community, and to work with the Neighborhood Association programs, so that the residents of Opportunity Villages are welcomed as participants within the community, so that there again is a bridge. And I'd just like to, since I still have a few minutes, to talk about the South Alamat Special Area Zone. You know, if you believe what you read in the Register Guard, there's a lot of talk about people in South Eugene being very concerned about their property values, and it makes it sound like we're afraid that we're going to lose money. But it's actually the opposite. In most cases, people are concerned that this area will be gentrified, and that some of the last affordable housing in our area will be replaced with unaffordable housing. And there is no affordable housing in that area, so where are those people going to go? And we're afraid that more people are going to be forced out into a state of homelessness. So please consider it in our zoning as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker this evening, Richard Locke.
Thank you, Board, for hearing me tonight. I'm here because I moved my business to Eugene about a year and a half ago from Springfield. And I found that the Eugene Toxic Right to Know got my number and called me up, and they are assessing me for a $2,000 assessment on my business. I have always had, never had to report. I don't report to the DEQ. I don't report to the state. I don't report to the federal government. There is, you know, after digging into this, I find that the Eugene Toxic Right to Know has been riddled with nothing but problems since it's, problem funding itself since it's been in inception, since the law passed. I do know that the council and the city manager have a hard time supporting this group also. The only way this group is The only way this group is, is, is funding itself is attaching themselves to people like me. Is it any, it's very, you know, it seems very ill that there's only 33 companies in this town that are reporting toxic materials. There's 55 of us that are not reporting it. There's nowhere on this. So, you have a budget of $120,000 to run the .8 persons, which the city manager is trying to bust it down to .5, and we are continuously hitting up new people like myself that are moving into town, that have legitimate business, who are great, we have, we're great employers, and we're being punished. The guy that, that creates the most waste in Eugene pays the same amount as I do. It's not right. It's just an extortion of my funds. So I've asked the, last Thursday, I asked the Toxic Right to Know Board to remove me from their list and hold me exempt 100% Mid Valley Metals. And I asked also for the 55 other businesses that are in this area, so that I might create some momentum to get us removed from this, because it's not right. It's extortion. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we'll close the public forum. And Counselor Pryor, Counselor Taylor in the queue. I want to thank everybody for coming out and testifying this evening, and we'll go with Counselor Pryor. And then, on the phone, if we have anything from Counselor Cyret or Counselor Clark?
No, nothing from me, thanks.
Counselor Clark?
Not at this moment, sir.
Okay. Counselor Pryor.
Thank you. I wanted to thank everybody for coming out tonight and speaking. We heard a lot of really good stuff. For those people that were concerned about their vehicles being towed or confiscated for camping, St. Vincent de Paul has a car camping program. Hopefully, you've already been in touch with them. Get in touch with St. Vincent de Paul, they have a car camping program.
They're all children. They don't have children.
Okay, we're, we're not taking.
It's not a back and forth.
We're not taking comments from the, from, from the gallery this evening, so.
But they may be able to refer you to somebody who can help. I understand, I understand your situation, and it was very tough, so I heard what you were saying. Also, for Sabra, hearing about the police being informed on current status, I think it certainly helps if everybody can be as informed as possible of what the status of stuff is. So I think that's probably a really good idea, that, that if we're going to do stuff, we should be informed. And, and I also hear we need to move as quickly as we can. We're, I'm very aware that we are not addressing the entire problem, and, and we, we need to move as quickly as we can in a thoughtful, deliberate way. And then finally, we have made a very conscious choice to step back from the South Willamette zoning. We, as Counselor Evans recommended, are going to go through a process, and hopefully it will be a process that will be very constructive in figuring out exactly how we can do this in a much more effective and collaborative way. But everybody here on the council recognizes, I think, the need to have stepped back and taken a breather and, and redo this. And I am confident that that process will result in some changes. And I'm confident that those changes will be positive, both for you and for the process and for the council. So I hold great optimism that this was actually an opportunity for us to learn how to do this better, and I think, I think we will do that. So, yes, we have, we have heard people's concerns about South Willamette. We have deliberately decided to step back and not implement anything until we have gone through a better process to figure out what we could do better. Thank you.
Counselor Taylor.
Thank you. Thanks to everyone who came to speak to us. There are two people I want to mention especially. I appreciate Mr. Imammy's efforts to save Keesey Square from development. I think he's not only making his own efforts, which are very good, his own suggestions, but making more people aware that the space may be lost, the last space we have, this heart of downtown, where people can gather. I think that's really important. And I'd like to thank Heather Selicki for our suggestions about how to help homeless people, and also how to prevent making more people homeless. I think that's really important whenever we talk about the homeless problem, to not adopt policies or take actions that contribute to more homelessness. Thank you.
Okay. We're prepared to move to item number three on our agenda, appointment to the Sustainability Commission. Counselor Taylor, as you're the acting Counselor President this evening, do you have a motion?
I move to appoint Zach Mulholland.
Second.
It's been moved to appoint Zach Mulholland to position two of the Sustainability Commission. Are there any comments, questions? Counselor, Counselor Cyret?
No, no questions.
Counselor Clark?
No.
Okay. Then we're prepared to vote. All those in favor, raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five, six. Counselor Taylor, I mean, Counselor, Counselor Clark?
Aye.
Counselor Cyret?
I vote aye.
So it is 8-0. Zach Mulholland is appointed to the Sustainability Commission. So we will move on with item number four, action on an ordinance to redesignate and rezone the Rest Haven Memorial Park site by amending the Eugene Springfield Metropolitan Area General Plan diagram and amending the Eugene zoning map. Do we have a motion? Counselor Taylor?
I'll make the motion, although I won't vote for it. I move to adopt Council Bill 5148, the proposed ordinance, as contained in attachment C.
Second.
It's been moved to second it. We have discussion on the motion. Counselor Taylor, and then Counselor Brown.
Okay. I'm concerned that we're giving up some public lands by doing this, that part of this, part of this land is zoned for public land, and there is a need for public land in that area. I'm also concerned that we haven't sufficiently considered the danger of runoff to existing homes from development in part of this land. So as it stands, I will vote against it.
Counselor Brown.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions about this property. Well, I've been reading, reading some of the, you know, the materials, and there's, I see that a 70-foot setback is mentioned in one of, one of the emails that a neighbor sent. Is that a requirement, that development be setback 70 feet? From the edges of the property, from the streets?
There are, so the existing, the property is subject to an existing conditional use permit, and there is a buffer requirement through the conditional use permit for the cemetery uses on the property, and it actually varies. It's not just 70 feet, but it actually varies around the south, southern portion of the property, south and southwest portion.
The portion that, that is designated public land?
No, the portion that's designated public land is north of 40th. It's the northern portion.
The northern part?
Yeah.
All right. Okay, so, so if this, if this ordinance is approved, then that 70-foot setback goes away?
This doesn't affect.
It doesn't be, it's not a PUD anymore? It's just presumed R1?
The rezone and redesignation that's proposed do not affect the existing conditional use permit, which has a number of conditions, not just a buffer requirement. If the, if there is a desire to do housing on the property, which we have seen that there is a desire, then the existing conditional use permit will have to be addressed. It may need to be changed in some way, so that the conditional use permit only covers the portion of the property that will remain in cemetery use, and then the rest of the property would be freed up, and then whatever developments proposed would need to go through whatever land use application is associated with that development. So it may trigger a planned unit development, it may trigger a subdivision. If they're just doing a couple lots, it may just be a partition. So it kind of depends on whatever that future development is.
What the grand plan is, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Selicki.
Yeah, a couple of questions, Heather. Can you explain the difference between the zoning and the metro plan, and why those exist and the history?
Sure. Well, the metro plan is the city's comprehensive plan that is kind of the blueprint. It includes our policies for governing, governing land use in the city, how we make kind of high-level decisions about land use. And as part of the comprehensive plan, there is a land use diagram map that is essentially supposed to guide how land use will develop in the future. So it's like high-level, where is housing, where is commercial, where would industrial occur? And then what we have is a zoning map. And typically, the zoning and the comprehensive plan map match, and so you don't have what we call plan-zone conflicts. And in this case, they, they currently match, so the property is on the long-range comprehensive plan map. It's designated parks and open space, and it is zoned, it's split-zoned. The northern portion is PL, public land, and the southern portion is R1, low-density residential. But when someone wants to do something different with their property than what either the plan designation is or the zoning is, then we look at whether or not it makes sense to change one or both of those maps. And in this case, if there's a desire to do housing, it's pretty limited, the housing that you can do with a parks and open space designation and a split zone, going to low-density residential, and then a matching R1 zone. You can do a cemetery in both of those, you can do housing, it does open it up a little bit more.
So the existing metro plan has this as entire property as parks and open space?
Correct.
And the existing zoning has it split? About one-third of it is, is public lands, and one-third of it is already R1? And issues around changing the public lands zoning to, I mean, changing the metro plan designation from open space to low-density city housing? And the public lands part of the zoning to, to, to residential zoning? So the two concerns I have about that are related to parks and open space and transportation traffic. And so first, on the open space, I know this has a Goal One, a Goal Five Protected Stream in it, and also in the, in the analysis that, that has been done on parks and open space, it said that there is a need for a park in this area, but our proposed plan isn't a land use plan, so you can't really use that. But, and then it said it's consistent. And if there is a need for parks in this area, how does taking public land out, or open space out of the inventory become consistent with the need for more parks?
So, right now, it's not in the parks inventory, because it's under private ownership. And this is something that the city did decades ago, where the planning thinking at the time was that things like cemeteries, golf courses, kind of semi-public open space areas, even if they weren't under public ownership, they were designated as parks and open space. And so, for instance, the Lane Memorial Park Cemetery out on West 11th, similar situation, they were parks and open space designated with an R1 zone, and they redesignated the part of their property that they didn't need anymore for cemetery to low-density residential. So similar situation. Regarding your question about, sorry, regarding your question about the existing parks inventory, as I mentioned, there are a number of uses that are allowed in low-density residential and in R1 zone, and park is, a park is one of them. And so redesignating or rezoning it doesn't take away the ability for a park to occur there. And in fact, sometimes when the city is looking at buying park property, or having a discussion with the property owner about whether or not they're even interested in selling the property, which is one of our goals, is that when we're buying a property, that the property owner is actually interested in selling it, that that happens closer to when a property owner is thinking about development. And so again, that, those conversations can all still happen regardless of what the design, or regardless of changing the designation and zoning to R1, because it'd still be allowed.
So R1 doesn't preclude a park. What about open space and Goal Five and the stream, and whether or not that applies?
Yep. So there is actually two Goal Five streams on the property, streams and kind of an associated wetland. That's a separate issue here. That's a, there's a, basically an overlay zone on the property that protects those resources and gives them a building setback. And so, nothing about the redesignation or rezone that's in front of you would change that, those aren't being affected. So they would still be there, that overlay would still be there.
So if the, if it were rezoned R1 and developed, those areas would still be protected with their, with the setbacks?
Right. They would have to.
How many feet?
I think one of them is 40 feet, and I think one of them's 20 feet, but that's a, that's what I'm recalling at this point.
All right. So the next question I had, related to the increased transportation and traffic associated with a change in zone, and it was a net increase of 222 trips that came out during peak hour, which is in the, maybe you can address that and, and why that doesn't, or what's the impact of that on, on this decision?
Sure. So, for this type of application, we're doing a high-level traffic analysis, and what we're doing is, we're saying, okay, if you redesignate or rezone, and in this case, we're both, doing both, a property, would the reasonable worst-case use, like the reasonable highest traffic generator use that would be allowed under the current zone versus the existing zone, you do a comparison of those two, and see whether or not your intersections would perform below the level that they're supposed to if you did this change. And so, and Catherine Brotherton, our city attorney, can probably say this significantly more eloquently than I am, but essentially, it's not saying that you're not going to see an increase in traffic, it's just, the analysis, to simplify it, is saying, with the increase in traffic, is it, are your intersections going to exceed what they were designed to hold for the traffic? And in this case, yes, there would be a higher traffic than what it would be currently under the model for the existing zone, and assuming a cemetery use and that sort of thing. But the infrastructure and the intersections are built to handle the projected traffic. If it was some other zone, like commercial, we'd be looking at different type of use, and then maybe there would be, you know, then you might have to look at mitigation. But in this case, we don't have to look at mitigation, because it didn't trip that need.
Right. So, okay. And so if there were any development on this under an R1, they'd still have to come back and talk about the Goal Five resources, and also the traffic, and have plans of mitigation for each of those?
For a new development application, I will say that there's an existing development application that's been pending in our office for housing from 2000, that's been pending in our office, and so it's subject to the provisions that were in effect at that time. So there's different, different provisions for traffic, different provisions for natural resources, those kinds of things.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Cyret?
No comments or questions.
Counselor Brown.
Thank you. I just have one more question. It's more just out of curiosity, it's not really relevant to the merits of the request. How many acre, you, you may not even know, but if you do, could you tell me how many acres of, it's 73.9 acres total. And do you know how many acres are currently in cemetery use, roughly?
I don't know exactly how many are in cemetery use, but I believe that 46, let's see, 27.63 acres are going from parks and open space. see, 27.63 acres are going from parks and open space and public land to low-density residential R1, and that roughly equates to the cemetery area.
Close to it.
So it's somewhere around 28 acres.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
Before I go to Counselor Taylor, Counselor Clark, did you have anything?
No, thank you, sir.
Counselor Taylor?
Thank you. Mainly a comment, if you said that we could still purchase land, if it's zoned R1, it can still be purchased for a park. But I think that if it's zoned R1, it will cost a lot more than if it's zoned public land, to purchase it for parkland. And then, another question, I wonder, did you consider the danger of runoff to properties adjoining this?
As part of a re-designation and re-zone application, and I know this can be really challenging, especially for the adjacent property owners, is we're not really looking at a development proposal at this time. But the good news is, is that the city has, you know, zoning standards around stormwater runoff. There are public work standards around stormwater runoff. And so, we know and have received a lot of testimony, both this time as well as when we were considering rezoning this property before, about a year and a half ago, regarding concerns about slope and tree preservation and stormwater. And so, we want to work really closely with the applicant and the adjacent property owners on those issues. But that's what's hard about re-zone applications, is you can't really address those issues on a rezoning, because you're not really looking at a development application.
Thank you.
Counselors Zelenka, and then I think we'll move to a vote.
Have you talked to the owners about selling any of the land for a park?
Yes, I've talked to their consultant. They're very aware of that, but I haven't heard interest one way or the other about it, but they're definitely aware.
Okay. And are there any other area, any other parcels of land within this area that you guys have your eyes on for a park?
That would be, probably, park staff would know that better than I would. I'm not aware of that, but as you may know, the park staff is going through a master planning process right now, and so they're re-looking at all of their park assessments right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So we'll move to a vote. All those in favor of-
I apologize. Counselor Evans, could I jump in there just real quickly with one question?
I think I'll let you do that. Go ahead, Mike. Counselor Clark?
Thanks, sir. Heather, this is, as I understand it, perhaps I've mistaken this, is this a quasi-judicial process?
Yes.
Then, could you just remind us on what basis we could vote not to or vote to rezone as a quasi-judicial process?
You're making your decision based on the record and whether or not the applicant has demonstrated that they meet the approval criteria for a Metro Plan amendment or for a zone change.
Thank you.
All right. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor of Council Bill 5148, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five. Counselor Cyret?
I vote yes.
Counselor Clark?
Aye.
And those who oppose? Counselor Taylor is opposed. The motion passes seven to one. Okay? We'll move on with item number five, action on an ordinance adopting the dusk-to-dawn permitted overnight sleeping pilot program. And I believe we have a substitute motion, Counselor Polling?
Amendment.
Oh, just the amendment. So, Counselor Taylor, would you like to put out the motion?
Yes. I move to adopt Council Bill 5149, adopting the dusk-to-dawn permitted overnight sleeping pilot program.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded, and now we have the amendment. Counselor Polling?
Thank you. And if I receive a second, I will address the issues. And I move to amend the hours in Recital A and Section 1 from between the hours of 8:00 PM and 7:00 AM to read between the hours of 4:30 PM and 7:30 AM.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded on the amendment and discussion on the amendment.
Okay. The reason I'm proposing the hours that I have proposed is, first of all, consistency. Now, this is, if and when this, and I'm going to say when this bill ordinance goes into effect, it's going to be a pilot project until March 15th. We all know that daylight and dusk and dawn changes as a year progresses. There's also dusk to dawn or sunset to sunrise. So to give a little more consistency, what I did is, I actually got on a computer today and looked up some facts. And during the time period between now and March 15th, the earliest sun, anyway, I chose the hours, I've got it written down, I just can't look at it right now. The, I chose those hours because we don't want people stumbling into a rest stop or a camp, whatever you want to call it, after the sun goes down and try to set up their camp. They need some time before actual sunset to get in. And likewise, we don't want people getting up before sunrise and try to break down things and move out before it gets too daylight during the day. So that's why I propose those hours. I know I messed that one up, but that's okay. And I think that it's, not only is it a consistency issue, but it's also a safety issue for the people taking advantage of this rest stop, campsite, whatever you want to call it.
Either Counselor Zelenka and then Counselor Brown?
Thank you for putting that forward, George, and doing the research. I agree with that. I think that putting your tent up in the daylight is an appropriate thing, and taking it down in the dark is an inappropriate thing. So those, like, those times seem appropriate to me, with the understanding that this is a one-site pilot for a limited duration through March 31st, 2016, so that the end of March. And so, at that point, or before that point, I suspect we'll be coming back and reviewing this and seeing how it worked. And if we need to make adjustments to that timeframe, we could. If this were probably a longer pilot, like a year or something like that, I'd probably, I'd think that maybe we would want to have maybe some winter and summertime adjustments to that. But we can discuss that at the end of the pilot. But as for now, I'm good with the amendment and the original motion.
Okay. And Counselor Brown?
What, I forget what the hours are at the rest, the current rest stops. Do we know what those hours are? Is there someone here that knows?
City manager?
The tents are up 24/7, so is it, there are, and I don't recall the actual times in which, so for example, community-supported shelters, there's a particular time in which they ask all of the residents to leave the site. I don't know what that, those hours are.
Okay. Well, does anyone know?
10 to 5.
10 to 5, yeah. Yeah, I, well, you know, I think, I think it should be the same as the rest stops, really. I mean, just for, and thank you, by the way, for researching this. That's good. The, this kind of reminds me when, before, when we were, you know, approving the setup of the rest stops, this, these similar hours were proposed, and it just didn't seem really to be consistent with sunlight and cold in the winter. And we expanded it. And we have the examples of the rest stops in Opportunity Village, they all worked really well. I didn't see any, where Counselors Zelenka mentioned that this is just going to be one spot, I don't see any limitation there. My idea was, if we could find several spots and get proper management and get proper, you know, like toilets and dumpsters and storage facilities, we could have more than one. But that's my understanding. Anyway, I have a question for the manager. When, I'd asked previously for a list of, you know, surplus properties that help us, and so I'm just wondering when we might expect to see-
We're putting that list together. And so, what our hope would be, is if this passes, that we would come back to you before your break, so you can approve a site. This doesn't limit it just to one. The council has to choose how many ultimately you choose to do. And so, we would come back with what we would hope is at least a site for you to pilot, and you would have a chance to approve that. And we're putting together the map for you that you would have ahead of time for that action.
Yeah, if we could see a menu, I mean, there's, I'm sure there's more than one site. I can think of other sites, but they're not under the city's jurisdiction, and other entities will have to be approached between now and then. But the first order of business is to pass this, I suppose. And there's nothing that says we can, you know, we can start off with these hours. If we feel they need to be changed later, we can do that. But yes, this is, thank you, Counselor Polling, this is a definite improvement on what we had before. Thanks.
Counselor Polling?
Yeah. I appreciate what Counselor Brown was saying about trying to make the hours the same as the rest stops, but this is not really the rest stop. This is a different type of situation. So I think different rules need, certain different rules need to apply, and I think the hours is the important thing. And my intention of, when I put this out, was that this is a pilot program that is ending on March 31st. Had it been a year long, I would have suggested, you know, either change the moniker or change the hours according to the calendar or whatever to adjust for the summer hours and winter hours. But for the time being, I think that this is a solution to the actual operating hours of this new type of a site that we're going to be erecting.
Counselor Zelenka?
Yeah, I understood that the ordinance does say sites, so it can be more than one site. I was speaking for myself in the, in our past experience, that actually getting more than one site approved in the short period of time that we have before we go on break is probably going to be very difficult, and it's likely going to be one site. But if it were more than one site, and that worked, that would be okay, too.
City attorney, you have clarification?
I do. I just want to make a quick clarification regarding the hours of operation. So, as the ordinance is currently written and with Counselor Polling's motion, the hours that would be set in here are an authorization to the city manager. They don't mandate that each site operates specifically under those hours. So it gives the city manager the flexibility where if we locate a site and it cannot open at 4:30, that he has the flexibility to have more limited hours. Now, he can't go beyond the parameters that you set within the ordinance, but it doesn't mandate the hours for every site.
Thank you for that clarification. Counselor Cyret, do you have any comment, question?
Sure. I'll just say thank you to Counselor Polling for bringing this amendment forward. I think it's a good responsive amendment, and I'm looking forward to seeing the sites that the city manager might have in mind and getting one of these sites up and running as soon as possible.
Okay. Counselor Clark?
Not to the amendment, but I would like to make a comment towards the larger motion.
Okay. So we're prepared to vote on the amendment. All those in favor of Counselor Polling's amendment, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six. Counselor Cyret?
Yes.
Counselor Clark?
Aye.
So now, we're back to the main motion. So we have, oh, city attorney?
I'm sorry to interrupt. I just want to point something out, that there's a minor change in the ordinance that's in your packet than the one that you considered at the public hearing, and that is the addition of the immediate effective date. So if this is passed with six votes, it will go into effect immediately.
Okay. And I believe Counselor Clark, you had comment on the main motion?
Thanks, sir. My question is to the manager, this has similar provisions for supervision and insurance as our previous ordinance with regard to rest stops does?
Yes.
Excellent. I need to comment, then, that one of my constituents, who is very energetic and fond of protecting our local rivers, suggested strongly that we consider the ideas of working with the county to take advantage of the fairgrounds as a potential site, as well as the fact that as of Friday, the ducks are done playing at Otzen Stadium, and perhaps some of the space around Otzen Stadium would be a good place. And I thought I'd pass that on, on his behalf.
Okay. Duly noted. Counselor Polling?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. On the AIS, let me see if I can find it. On page 171 of the council packet, about the third paragraph down, it says, "The city will be responsible for site operation either directly or by contract." Can you explain a little more about that?
One of the things that we're looking at in this particular case is, as you know, right now, the way the rest stops work is, there's an organization that comes forward from the community that takes on the responsibility to operate those, and they enter into an operating agreement with us for that. In this particular case, what we would anticipate is that the actual management of the site would be perhaps a nonprofit in town or some other entity, which we may end up having to contract with, which is different than the current model with the rest stops. And so, for example, we've talked with St. Vincent de Paul as a possible contractor for just the management of the site. And there could be others.
Okay. And then, if we're having these people that take advantage of this opportunity to find someplace for the night, if we're having them pack up and move, is there some man or some idea as to providing storage for their belongings and also for sanitation purposes?
I think sanitation purposes, yes. What we would say is, the sites would also need to have sanitation garbage and restroom facilities and those kinds of things. As far as lockers or storage facilities, we haven't included that at the moment. It's not that somebody else, for example, could step forward and try to provide those, either through a regular nonprofit or some other entity can also do that as well. We do not currently have plans to provide that as part of this site package.
And do we have any projections or ideas as to what this is going to cost the city to operate this or contract it out? And if so, where's that, where are those funds coming from?
What we would do is, when we come back for a specific site, and if we have a specific contract or an operations plan, at that point, we would know how much that would actually cost and who that would be. We would also have a conversation about where that money would come from. So we would bring that back with a proposed site.
Okay. So we will have another opportunity to discuss the financing of it at a later time?
Yes. You have to approve a site that we would come back to you with, and the financing would be a part of that as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? So we're prepared to vote. All those in favor of Council Bill 5149, please raise your, as amended, please raise your hand. So we, one, two, three, four, five, six. Counselor Cyret?
I vote aye.
Counselor Clark?
Aye.
The motion passes eight to zero. One last, one last item, item six. Do we have any committee reports from counselors at this time?
I'd like you to comment.
Counselor Polling?
It's not really a committee report. It's just, as people have probably read in the newspaper today, that Ed Russo, the registered guard reporter that's been covering the city of Eugene's council meetings for the last 11 years, has gotten a promotion, and Christian Hill will be taking his place. I just want to take a moment to thank Ed for his reporting abilities. In the 11 years that he served as the city of Eugene reporter, I have never seen such an even-handed presentation of what the city government has been doing. He took the time to- He took the time to, to explain and both sides of whatever issue we were discussing and he never really took sides. He just reported it as it was. And I, I just want to extend my appreciation to Ed for the 11 years that he spent sitting over there reporting and the job that he did reporting our actions.
Counselor Evans? Counselor Clark?
Yeah, I just want to echo Counselor Polling's remarks and, and add an exclamation point. Wish him the best and good luck to Christian.
And he's going to need it.
I, I think all of us feel the same way about Ed. I think he, he's done an excellent job and he's a highly professional journalist and we wish him well in his new role as an editor at the register guard. With that, I think we're done with the business of the day. We are adjourned.